I'd like to call this meeting of the County Board of Commissioners and Commissioners. As you can see tonight, we're a little short. We still have a whole one though. Let you know that Commissioner Holbrook is here earlier. Felt a little bad, but he's taking his night off. And Commissioner Pauls is on a mission trip. And he left on Saturday and I expect to go spend some time next week. But we do have forums for wheels still conduct business. Next item would be our pledge of allegiance and invocation that we're going to call County Clerk Gary Milton to do that.
I plead allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to your Republic for which you stand. One nation, united in thy, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for allowing us to come together in this place to conduct this meeting in County. Please help these commissioners to make decisions that will be in the best interest of the citizens of our county. My prayer is that all decisions tonight will be pleasing to you, for it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I see two elected officials voting in favor of this. If you'd all would like to stand and be recognized, please.
We've got to say it.
I'll vote for mayor. I'll vote for mayor. They're there, so I'll let's stand. Thank you very much. Any elected officials? All right, thank you. Ben, if you'll please stand. Thank you. And County Clerk, if you would stand and be recognized. County Finance Director Chris Criss.
George O'Y, I'm helped to read.
Chris Green, Tax Minister's credit.
Phil Carter, Planner's credit.
Our next agenda is the agenda itself. At this time, the issues of addition or additions in the agenda.
There's no addition, could delete. I make a motion to approve the agenda as yet.
Commissioner Hutchins, your second agenda.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Allen, all the favors, please raise your hand. Thank you. Next agenda item is citizen recension. Gary, if you can sign up.
Okay.
If anyone failed to sign, who would like to speak, they come up and sign up at court at this time. Anyone who would like to speak, fail to do so, they come up and sign in. Gary Dunn, we'll send the agenda to Karen Minn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have six items on consent agenda through consideration this evening. Item A, events from March 7th and March 19th, 2013, regular meetings. Item B, the budget amendment in the Health Department, asking to budget $177 in local grant funds to be used in care coordination for children's programs. Item C, the budget amendment in the Health Department, asking to budget $10,500 in federal grant funds to be used for operating expenses for cardiovascular disease. Item D, the budget amendment in the Sheriff's Office, asking to budget $1,714 in departmental grant funds to be used for depreciation, banquet, retention center, ministry participants. Item E, the budget amendment in the Sheriff's Office, asking to budget $67,800 in federal forfeiture funds to be used to purchase two Chevy Tahans for the county officer. Item F, the budget amendment in the Department of Social Services, asking to budget $15,437 in federal grant funds to be used for departmental ministry costs. All that, Mr. Chairman.
Our admissions this time in question about Senator. Gary Dunn, do I have a motion? Senator Jimm, approve this?
I make a motion to approve the consent, Mr. Jimm.
Commissioner Allen, to approve the agenda. I'll second. Second, Commissioner Hutchins, all the favors, please raise your hand. Thank you. Our agenda, if I can get it out. We have Parkers, A, your health management governance changes.
Thank you, sir. Glad to hear. Thank you all for having me. I'm here again. What I want to share with you tonight is this, your request and your approval and support of some changes to the partners bylaws. Just to give you a quick background, when you agreed to the merger last year between Pathways and Partners, Crossroads, we established the governance structure for Pathways, for Partners. And the governance now is a 26-member board of directors. And the board members are broken down by county based on population. So the individual county's population as a percentage of our total equates how many members they have on the 26-member board. And that's driven by statute, you know, what some of the particular requirements of the, how the board should be structured. There's a general statute that talks about the board of directors. And so when we merged last year, we were in full compliance with the general statute at the time. Within the general statute, there's a requirement in certain categories of people, only currently about four allow such categories of people. For example, somebody with business expertise, if you're fired. Somebody that's interested in the welfare of children, just required. Shortly after we merged, that state statute was changed. And a couple of things impact what we need to bring before you tonight to request your approval on changes to the pathways of board governance. One is there's now a limit based off on state statute of 21 members on the board of the local area authority board. So we have 26 members now, but these statutes require us to have a maximum of 21. So that's, that's one of the things we have to come into compliance with. The second is those few categories that they said have to be represented on the board has now gone to 13. So there's 13 required categories of individuals that have to be on the board. Currently, if you look across the 26 members of the Department of Board of Directors, there's about five of those such categories that we don't have represented on board. So to get in compliance with the statute, we've got to go from 26 to 21. And then we have to also decrease by five more and then go and recruit people that fill those other specific categories. But the Partners Board of Directors did their, and the bylaws changes is left the same methodology in place of the 21. The goal is to distribute those based on population, the same way that the 26 were. So Cleveland County would have the same percentage of the 21 that they had of the 26. So that wouldn't, there wouldn't be a change there. The other thing that the Partners Board voted to keep constant is to have one commissioner from each of the eight counties. The new statute only required to have eight commissioners, one total, rather than one per county. Partners Board of Directors felt that was very important to continue to have each county allowed to have a commissioner, that's the choosing of the county commissioners, or to have an individual designated by them. So eight of the 21 seats are county commissioner seats, or if appointed, somebody to work their place. The other 13 would kind of with those individual categories. Of the categories, one person, one individual can serve in two such categories. So for example, if there's a requirement to have attorney on the partner board, and there's a requirement to have somebody interested in the development of disabled population. So you could have an attorney that's got a child with a developmental disability, and he or she would count as two of those 13 requirements. And that would free up at large spots for the commissioners to be able to point from. So that, that would be a good thing on the county. On the back end, that would create a big problem, because if one person, if that attorney with a, with a disabled child is serving, and he's one of the 21 members, and he or she, or he in this case resigned from the board, then you're going to have to fill that same spot with an attorney with a child with it, that's going to be difficult to do. You could find yourself having to fill, free up another slot to get that vacancy filled. So what Partners is, is your question tonight is, is your support and approval of the bylaw changes that we sent to you that basically says we have to come into compliance with the state statute. We have to do that by October the 1st of this year. Several appointments around the 26 are up for renewal anyway, because they're on one-year terms, that our statute expires on June 30th. So that'll free up the opportunity to start that transition process, and then we'll plan on completing that before October the 1st.
I agree. Commissioners, any questions?
I have some questions. Looking over, I understand how you came up with the form of a population per representative. I guess my question is, if looking at the population versus the cost, or person cost, for example, Gassen County is 952,000. Their cost per person is $4.59. Okay, Burke County, 90,000 people, theirs is a $1.58. Ours is 98,791,000, which is $8.06 per person. This is twice as much as any other county out there. So if we're looking at per population, why hasn't that come into effect?
The, as far as the spending of the county dollars, the board doesn't, they leave that to management to decide how the allocations from the county are to be spent. So we work with the various county managers on using that. So, so the board doesn't really get into allocation of the funds. Of our total budget, our total budget's about $300 billion. And the county money collectively is probably three or four million.
So you're saying you and the county manager work in one line?
Well, the county money that is given to us by county states in that county. So Cleveland County money doesn't go to support any other county services. So there's a, there's a big discrepancy in, in service dollars given to us by just the kind of, our funding is really made up of three categories. Medicaid is about half of the biggest automatic we're dealing with. The second category is state fund, individual funds. And then trailing way far behind that is the third category is county money. Medicaid and the state fund go across all eight counties. The county money doesn't go across any county, so very.
Well, and looking, looking at some of that, and I guess the question is, the money stays in the county, or the money provides service for the people in the county.
Correct.
But then, so a year ago, we lost a lot of businesses out of Cleveland County that didn't reach, right here, when they went and combined the LMEs and what's in it right? The requirements for the LMEs and so forth. And some of our county people who had businesses in the county law, and they wanted to get to Gassen County or somewhere else. So even though the county money stays in the county, it's still going out of the county if we spend it somewhere else. I guess my question is, is some way we can create those jobs like in Cleveland County if we're paying a large portion. So some of the money will actually stay in the county.
It may be something, there hasn't been as much of that as, as far as Cleveland County businesses shutting down. And even though there might have been some consolidations at a corporate level, the jobs are still here in Cleveland County. It might be that the corporate office is headquartered, but the payroll, which is really what, where these dollars are spent on paying individuals to serve, most of those are Cleveland County residents. In other words, if I, if I had been working for your company here, and you combined with one in Charlotte, I still work here. Those tax dollars are, in effect, staying local to the extent that they're paying for workers that have houses here and shop here.
But that's something I know you and Eddie worked on, and I would like to see you work on some more.
We do, because one of the things when we, we work, you can see some traffic. Cleveland and Gassen were closer together, particularly when you, when you give the value of buildings that we get from Gassen County. They give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building space. But Cleveland has always been giving us the highest amount of office. And when we use that, when we talk to other counties, because they want some of the stuff we're doing in Cleveland County with those dollars, and we're like, well, if you provided the dollars, then you'd provide some of those same types of services. But we'll continue to work with the county managers to see what we can do to equalize that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Ben, I believe you're asking that can we approve the revision of the composition of board of directors?
Yes, sir. I think there's a, our resolution, I think there's a draft resolution that we had proposed, the language for this is approval of that.
Uh, would you like to read that?
Do you want to read it?
Ben, you want to read it, or Gary, you want to read it?
Sure.
Obviously.
A resolution in support for revision of the composition of Partner Behavioral Health Management Board of Directors. Whereas Partner Behavioral Health Management was established by joint agreement between the Commissioners of Burke, Catawba, Cleveland, Gassen, Ardena, Lincoln, Surrey, and Yackton Counties on July 1st, 2012, by merging the former mental health partners, Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare, and Pathways, LME area authorities. And whereas Board of Directors for Partners was established at the time of the merger to be a 26-member board distributed proportionately according to the population of each individual county as a percentage of the combined merger's population. And whereas North Carolina Session Law, 2012-151, Senate Bill 191, codified as NC General Statute 122-C-18D.1, enacted new requirements for area authority boards in both sides and composition of members, and requires area authorities to be in full compliance with the new requirements, no later than October 1st, 2013. And whereas the Board of Directors for Partners has thoroughly discussed and explored various options to come into compliance with the statute and to maintain fidelity to the will of the commissioners expressed at the time of the merger. And whereas Partners Board of Directors has modified its bylaws to maintain an equitable distribution of members among the eight counties that comprise the organization. And whereas Partners request that modifications to the governance structure be supported by the respective boards and county commissioners. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners supports and approves the modifications made to the governance structures of Partners that is in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 122-C-18D.1, and will work collaboratively with the Partners Board of Directors to appoint the members with the requisite background and qualifications to maintain compliance with state statutes, adopted this 12th day of April, 2013.
Commissioners, you have heard the resolution, and for you, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make the motion to approve the resolution for the revision of the Partners Behavioral Health Management.
Okay. Commissioner Allen, I'll second. Yes, sir. Discussion, discussion, all the favors, please raise your hand. Thank you all. Next agenda item, Cortia, President of National Public Health.
Here, you can put you on, reading that.
I have.
This says, "A resolution in support of National Public Health Week. Whereas the week of April 1st through 7th, 2013 is National Public Health Week. And the theme is public health is return on investment, save lives, save money. Whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. Whereas the Cleveland County Health Department's mission is to assure, enhance, and protect the health of Cleveland County citizens through education and prevention. Whereas preventing diseases before they start is critical to helping people live longer, healthier lives, while managing health-related costs. And whereas preventable chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, and diabetes are responsible for millions of premature deaths each year. And whereas chronic diseases cause Americans to miss 2.5 billion days of work each year, resulting in lost productivity totaling more than $1 trillion. And whereas investing just $10 per person each year is proven, in proven, community-based public health efforts could save the nation more than $16 billion within five years. Whereas strong public health systems are critical for sustaining and improving community health. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of April 1st through 7th, 2013, as National Public Health Week, 2013, in Cleveland County, North Carolina. We call upon the citizens of Cleveland County to observe this week by helping their families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health and adopt preventative, preventive lifestyle habits. If approved, it will be adopted this the 2nd day of April, 2013."
Thank you, Gary.
I think they do a good job in promoting health throughout the county with the different projects and things they've got going, you know, to place it for the kids to be seen, the diabetes claim, so forth. They do a very good job with all the money they've got. And if there's no more comments, I would like to vote to approve the resolution.
Mr. Hutchinson, the resolutions for National Public Health Week.
I'll second that.
Ben, you have a discussion or comments? You know, maybe anybody's question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is Connect Future, Central Carolina Council of Governors.
Chair Commissioners, my name is Jim Cross, with the Central Line Council of Governors. I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk about the Connect Initiative. I also would love to invite the joinings, Mayors Earl and Shelby, because the mayors in the region are quite critical in helping guide this process. Also with me is your aunt from Arkansas, who is our transportation manager. What I'm here today to do is, first of all, I want to apologize to you for not being able to provide that on the running this initiative. Your county is a critical part of the region that is, is part of this, this region within, within North Carolina. That is one of the really generators for the state in terms of, in terms of the county jobs and quality of life. So the, the Connect Future is really the start, because our board, all, and our board is elected officials. Elected officials appointed by county, and county boards, and city, and county councils. They, they indicated years ago, many years ago, that, that while most of the issues that cities and counties work with, they can handle on their own, or working with their immediate neighbors. But there are some issues, there are a select number of issues where we can get better results if we work together. And so the, the members of our board, the elected officials, directed us to begin to work and work with the, not only the cities and the counties and the towns, but also with our partners, with others that work on, work for this economic development, this private sector. They help identify what people see in the future are important to maintaining the vitality of this region, to maintain an economic growth, maintaining jobs, growing jobs, as well as quality of life, growing cost of living. They also directed that we have a process that relies heavily upon the input from residents in the community, from the stakeholders, from our member communities and counties. Excellent, please. The way we're going to do this is really by asking a lot of questions. Asking what's important in communities throughout the region, what's important, and what are those, what are those areas of importance that we need to work on today. The area includes a 14-county bi-state region. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant to do this planning, and the grant, part of the requirements were that we work within the area that's been identified really by the federal government as an area, if you will, in the area of the MSA. Purpose again is, I, excuse me, the process that was identified included, starting with asking questions at the, at sub-regional levels. So we have 32 open houses within the region. And we also gather data from small group meetings, from online input, from self, what I call self-driving tours, where individuals would take resources back and have discussions, and then submit the results back. The result of that, we had over 2,000, 2,000 people provide input to us. We wanted to know what residents care about the most. We wanted to make sure that we covered the 14 county area. We wanted to, we wanted to also use that information to develop what we call our indicators, which are really just evaluation criteria. So as we look at issues and options to address some of those issues, we needed to get evaluation criteria based upon the use of DBC from both the RAC region. What, what we identified based upon the input DBC, whether, what people were concerned about, and I don't think there's any big surprise that people are concerned about jobs, economic development, employment, property, transportation, traffic, mobility, infrastructure to support that growth, managing the growth, and sustainable development, and schools, education, and so forth. So these were the words that were used to describe concerns by the people that came to the meetings. Excellent. The, we also ask people for regional features that best illustrate the places of value. And this is important, we'll talk a little bit about that later, but people talked about the fact that town centers are important. Now to age the party, where we're at right now, people in communities like Shelby value that sense of place, that unique sense of identity for their community. And they wanted to build and grow, grow that, that unique sense. They did not want to look like every other community else. And they want their community to grow based upon the values of that community. Parks, greenness, state parks, forests, and preserve land, or rivers, streams, lakes. And neighbors with housing, office, and travel, so that people can walk if they choose, or if they want to, on certain features. And further descriptors included that they were looking for friendly places, quality of the place, that's dynamic and durable, that impression, again, unique to their community, quality of the place, ease of access, and sort. Where that recognizes the historical value, they didn't want to lose their links to the past in their community. So what, what, we're in the very beginning stages of this initiative right now. But some of the immediate results and future results are shown here. One of the, one of the items that's provided to you tonight, and we can write it about concretely to you and to others in the region, is a county-level economic assessment report. That was really the first piece of this effort, is identifying economic strategies for the region. And then within those strategies, what are those areas that we want to begin to work on together? One of those areas that I have to identify career headlines. And that's really a regional platform to identify, one hand, what are the skills required for the jobs that are going to grow in this region? So we had, we were collecting data from major employers throughout the region, identifying their skill levels, and then providing that information to the trainers and community colleges, colleges, and others that provide training, so that they can build programs to support developing those skills. And making that, also that information available to job seekers, both institutional, those, those that help job seekers from an institutional basis and an individual basis too. This would be, and we hope to have this, this product available up and running. And it's going to be available to folks throughout your, throughout your county, throughout the region, so that community colleagues will be able to access this information and determine what are the, what are those skills required for major employers, the local employees, who gave the input there for this year. Your residents will also be able to look at this and determine what skills it is, should they be looking to, to build for their own personal purposes, to be able to get the jobs that are available now, that will be available in the future. So that's something we're writing on. We mentioned regional freight, that was something that was talked about, that as we grow, we want to be able to make sure that we can freight throughout the region. Downtown redevelopment strategy. Reinvestment in downtown has been very important, I think, very important for a lot of communities, because they have a lot of infrastructure. it's very important for a lot of communities, because they have a lot of infrastructure, like they have, sometimes they have housing in there, they have roads, and water, and sewer, and, uh, schools, and being able to make sure that those remain viable and maintain an historic sense, uh, within the community is very important, working out strategies to help with addressing that. We're going to have a compilation of the regions of this community, so we'll be able to communities throughout the region. And assessment of housing needs. One of the things I was identifying economic development with, was, uh, the fact that the regions that make sure that they have housing available to meet the needs of current and future employers is going to be very important. So we want to know what those housing needs are. We also know that, um, in, in this area, but in other parts of the country, um, populations that are aging are looking at different types of housing and aid, just to understand what those needs are, making that information available to communities and counties, so they can use that, uh, to build their housing strategies will be useful as well. Uh, so, again, in the beginning stages of this, uh, one of the, one of the, uh, most immediate, uh, public engagement opportunities is the, what's called a regional reality check. Uh, this will be just one event on June fourth. Uh, we're looking to have four hundred people from throughout the region. People that are people, so we're looking for people from government, we're looking for people from the private sector, we're looking for people, uh, from, uh, non-for-profits, uh, that, uh, all contribute to addressing issues throughout the region. And we, uh, we will have a very structured and structured process to gain a better understanding of where those folks think that will, will occur, one of the challenges to that growth. So, uh, on a, on a sub regional basis, they'll be looking at, for the growth that's projected, where would that go in terms of housing, in terms of jobs, where would that occur? And we'll use that, again, to build a model for regional bases. Following that, there'll be a series of, again, beauty growth workshops throughout the, throughout the region, um, so we would want to get some in your county as well, where we receive public input, uh, somewhat on the same basis with a little bit more information that we've been able to gather, in terms of what those projections will be. Uh, the, uh, in two thousand fourteen, mid of light, we're, uh, we're going to definitely be looking at options for different regional growth scenarios, uh, and we're looking for input and feedback, what people see as disadvantages and advantages to different options and growth, uh, based upon, again, the input we can see. And finally, we're looking to have a final growth framework, and late in two thousand fourteen, again, to see what happens. What's important about these, this effort is that what we come up with, uh, is going to be vetted, if you will, in two different ways. First, uh, there will be a, what's called a policy form, which includes, uh, elected officials, uh, that have been appointed by, uh, their, uh, their, their county board, city council, and will include them, and they will be looking at recommendations for, uh, that, that come from the different workers that are, that are building, uh, the different models. Uh, and, uh, there'll be vetted, and there'll be, uh, that, that form will be, uh, essentially proving which ones will be in the public or set of recommendations. The second layer of vetting, if you will, will be when it comes back to you and to others, because you will have the option of looking at all the recommendations, saying, but also would be helpful to us, these are other recommendations will be useful, not the, you can choose and select which ones you find to be appropriate and useful in your, in your community and your counties. So, that, uh, that's basically what we're doing. As I mentioned, um, we have two mayors here, and, uh, they have not seen this presentation before either, uh, and so I thought it'd be good for, uh, for them also to identify their expectations and some of the issues that they're looking to ensure their residents are, so.
Jim, I have a question. How long have you guys been, I mean, when did you start doing this? Sure, for, I mean...
The, the first, uh, the first meeting of this, of the open houses started, um, probably about, um, in, uh, late fall.
Ohio. And you've got first primaries, I'm going to slide right here, just get it done. But one of the, what would a town like Earl hope to get from this wide range in fourteen county regional connectivity project? What I hope to get is somewhat, we have gotten already, is knowledge from the small towns that have been attacked by the megopolis in Charlotte. Uh, you know, we believe, and I think a lot of planners think that within fifty years, that, uh, Charlotte will come up eighty-five, maybe Shelby will meet Gaffney at, uh, at the river. So small towns have a unique challenge. Where do we go in that type of environment in the next fifty years? When you come from a small town where layers serve twenty-five to thirty years, and council number forty-five, some over eighty years, that will take a long year. So that's what we're trying to look at and learn some of these things, as well as make connections with folks in other towns, counties around the fourteen county region, who can help us invent some wheels. We don't have the resources to develop the wheels we need, but we can ride on some of theirs. And that's what we hope to get out of this, as we look at what makes our region change.
As, as Mr. Crosser mentioned, uh, clearly Shelby, we had not seen his presentation, so I really can't, not kind of learn more about the process. I will say, just kind of follow up on some of what he said. I have attended some of these meetings about six months ago, to, uh, some of the kickoff meetings. It's real impressive, the thing that impressed me the most about it is that it really is about hearing from the public, it's a change of ideas. Certainly what I hope we can get out of this process, to hear from our constituents, to hear from our citizens. And I've, I've attended some of the workshops that, that helped here in Shelby, and I'm very impressed. We've heard a lot of good things, or a lot of bad things, it's kind of, it's kind of good to hear it all, and that's, that's what I really liked about this. The thing that's impressed me about this is that, uh, it's, it's not somebody at the outside kind of coming in and trying to impose their ideas and values and what they think is important. It really is a exchange of innovation and thoughts on how best our region can grow. Because the first meeting that I attended about six months ago in Charlotte was, I think it was Mayor Fox mentioned, that whether or not we like it or not, we're going to grow. We tend to think that Cleveland County is not going to grow, and I think we all hope it will, I believe it will, but I think it's important we be in dialogue with our neighbors in Gaston County, in Lincoln County, so that we can understand what we all, how we work together, to kind of improve our, improve our, our region as a whole. So, thank you all for letting me speak, and, and again, I've asked Mr. Crosser to make this presentation, our city council, because we haven't fully sort of signed on to the process yet, but we'd all be observing and participating, but, for sure. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I tended to help you meet to start with, and I wasn't impressed. I'll tell you why, I'm going, most of this stuff is set on population varying, the areas we explained, uh, to start with. Degraded the population, the more programs they need, okay? You're saying that you're going to come and tell us all these things we need to do, but somebody has to pay a bill. Okay, we've looked at it, we've had conversations with Lincoln and Gaston County. Lincoln and Gaston County is similar to us. Mackinburg County is something different. You know, with their population, their rail system, there are things they've got going. That's why Bill and I, and we had conversations with Lincoln County today. We're trying to form a partnership with these three counties, okay? And, uh, this range is down to Rock Hill, Mackinburg, Charlotte. And, uh, even to make up your board to start with, majority of your board, Connect the Future, is Mackinburg County, down in Sycamore, so forth. And like I say, and listening to what some of them wanted, they want a lot, because they want it for the big cities. And I think that we're just going to be a number that they need to get something going. I may be wrong, but you can prove them wrong, you know, I've been wrong before, but like I say, I, I attended some of the meetings, and like I say, each time we were there, they were referring to the heavy populated areas, what do we need to do in the heavy populated areas, just like you talked about, community college training. We've got those programs going now. They're connecting with the other college, and we, we're working with the, we've got partnership, two land jobs. I think some of this is duplicating what we're already doing, you know, that, uh, we're already doing some of it, and at some point in time, somebody has to pay a bill, and that's my question. If you do the survey, where's the money coming from to do the projects? And I know Earl's a small town, but still again, if you're going to do projects, somebody has to pay a bill, and that's my question. Are we going to be paying a bill for the larger population areas? Or will the larger population areas share the money with us? And I, I don't think so.
Chair Commissioners, if I may, uh, first of all, the concerns you raise, uh, are absolutely unfathomable. Uh, we, we want to make sure that this is not all about, um, the heavy populated areas now. This is about the fact that every part of this region is going to grow at a different rate, and it's going to grow with different needs, but there may be some common elements where we can work together, develop systems that work across the board on a regional basis to meet those needs more efficiently. So, uh, your discussion about Charlotte Regional Partnership and Training Programs is a great thing. We do not, uh, we are not duplicating the office effect. One of the directions from our board, and our board, by the way, is representative of the entire region, and it is, uh, we actually have many more, the vast majority of our members are delegates of all side of the county. But, uh, getting back to your issue, and we, we, one of our partners in this effort is the Charlotte Regional Partnership, and we work very closely with them to make sure that we're developing and helping them develop products that, um, work across the region and give them more value, uh, across the region. There is not in place right now, a system that allows Charlotte Regional Partnership to gather that employment data in terms of what the skill requirements are, and translate that into training programs that can be calibrated, so that whether you're getting trained in Cleveland County, or in, um, in Madison County, you're getting the same training for those skill levels, and that's what we're trying to do. And we believe by developing these programs on a regional basis, that, that can be used throughout the region. We're, uh, really allowing companies to scale to occur, we're not reinventing the wheel for every county, uh, and we're working collaboratively and round the competition in all areas that, uh, where there is, there is a common, common interest. If we do this, uh, for example, the training program alone, the headline career hours, that's going to allow us to market more effectively throughout the region, and it's going to put Cleveland County in a more competitive position. In terms, we believe that, and our, the consultants that work on economic development say that's the case as well.
Commissioner, what I would say is, what is before us tonight is a memorandum of understanding, not necessarily a funded document, uh, we could actually read the memorandum of understanding and, and see how it plays out in, uh, for the future, by digital paper. Uh, there's a memorandum, uh, I'm going to ask you to read, read pages, if you just enter into record.
Mr. Chairman, I may ask one question.
Anyone want to copy this, or?
Yes, sir. I may ask one question. How many counties ought to participate? How many counties are having years to share the possibility?
In North Carolina, to the chair, Commissioner, in, in North Carolina, Gaston County has opted not to participate at this level, this time. Royan County has not taken any action. The rest of the counties are participating in North Carolina. I, I don't have an updated comment on that.
This is something we have to act on tonight that we're missing too.
You can take a few more questions.
I'd make a motion that we table at least two commissioners a year, and we have a full board so we can.
Motion to table until all committees present.
On second thought.
Alan, continue your brother's discussion. Question for Jim. Here, I'll, uh, automatically, I'll be right in.
Go. Get back with Jim. Our next gentleman out of the debate, into the Destination Cleveland County lease, uh, County Attorney, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on December eighteenth, two thousand twelve, we approved a loan to Destination Cleveland County. Uh, this loan was to be repaid, um, back against their current pledges, uh, and also that loan was contingent upon an additional loan that they received that would be used to complete their project. And also, one of the requirements was that they receive a, uh, EDA grant extension. Uh, we have, they have applied for that extension, uh, we have received notification from EDA that the grant has been extended until December seventh, two thousand thirteen. Um, uh, County Attorney has amended the lease agreement. Uh, there were reading amendments, uh, to that agreement, there were a couple of other corrections that were requested by Destination Cleveland County. First amendment would be the completion of renovations, that all renovations shall be completed and the center be located, the leased property shall be operational, uh, no later than December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Uh, the second amendment that was, uh, the next two amendments were requested by Destination Cleveland County, that their hours of operation initially stated that it would be, uh, eight hours would be, uh, ready to Cleveland County residents, uh, but my understanding that they initially planned on being open only thirty hours a week, uh, so therefore, uh, what they're asking is that we designate one day, uh, of free admission to Cleveland County residents. So the amendment would state, if you agree, uh, that the center will be open to the public and fully operational for a minimum of thirty hours per week, uh, the leaseee shall designate at least one day of the center's operation, operating schedule for free admission to Cleveland County residents. Uh, the third amendment is really more of a technical, uh, change. Initially, the, uh, name, uh, of the center was, within the lease agreement, was the Earl Scrugg Center, Songs and Stories of the Carolina Foot Heels. Uh, that appears in the original lease, and they're asking that the name be changed to, updated the name, Earl Scrugg Center, Music and Stories from the American Sound. Those are the only three changes to the lease agreement. Uh, all the terms of the original lease agreement dated March eighteen, two thousand eight, shall remain in full force and effect.
Mr. So, we were waiting the report from the, uh, EDA, and we received that, uh, that they have been granted by the region, and the attorney is kind of cleaning up the language on the lease agreement. Do I have any questions at this time?
Question is, it's December thirty-fourth, Tuesday, open this.
Well, by that day.
By that day, since that's what we asked for.
Any other questions? I have a motion to approve the changes in the lease agreement.
Question, one day to be open can be a sign of labor.
Yes, I, I don't know that that date's been chosen yet, it could be some day here, at least one full day here.
Any questions about motion to approve this, Mr. Chairman?
I'll make the motion to change the lease agreement, do that.
Mr. Sessions?
I'll say to that motion.
Alan, any other discussions, questions? Here now, I'll take it, please, right in. Our next gentleman out of the, Mr. Carter, and, I guess, uh, R two seven oh seven, Shelby I pass, bound condemnation, Carolina.
Do you have another resolution for your consideration? Department of Transportation has asked for our comments. Department of Transportation has asked for our comments on design of Shelby bypass. And during this review, we realized that there was an opportunity here to incorporate a section of the Carolina Freight Trail with its design of bypass. And the valley passed around, tried to superimpose the design of the bypass onto the Carolina Freight Trail master plan, to show you which areas of bypass could be coordinated with that trail. Legmon, Dr. O, has also supported this request, and we've included a copy of their resolution in your agenda also. To use some background, we adopted the Carolina Freight Trail master plan back in January two thousand and ten, and includes about a hundred and six miles of proposed trail in our county, connecting, linking popular destinations throughout the county, and to adjoining counties. The resolution, you want me to go through it? Would you like me to read this? Would you like me to read the resolution? Yes, sir. Whereas NCDOT is currently developing plans for R2707, US seventy-four bypass, and whereas NCDOT has requested input on the design of the project for R2707, located within the jurisdiction of Cleveland County. And whereas Cleveland County adopted the master plan with Carolina Freight Trail on January fifth, two thousand and ten, and whereas this multipurpose path along the First Broad River will pass under a proposed bridge on the US seventy-four bypass, and extend along the southern edge of the proposed rightaway. And whereas implementation of Carolina Freight Trail master plan will be competed without design considerations for a multipurpose path within the rightaway. And whereas Cleveland County and Sevius Shelby have adopted comprehensive transportation plans, as well as other land use bicycle and pedestrian plans that reference these accommodations. Now therefore, we resolve that Cleveland County Board of Commissioners respectfully request NCDOT to consider design combinations for the Carolina Freight Trail, as long as construction will not be delayed.
I apologize to you, that's what I was. We changed. Commissioners, you heard the resolution, we have, Commissioner Carter requested, what kind of park presentations, who will design changes for Carolina Freight Trail, but I have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Hudson, any questions? Tom, second. Commissioner Allen, any questions? Here, no, automatically, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Allen, it's several attacks, according to talk, please do more of a register. Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on occasion, the county does acquire property for full lender action, figure also, as there's no purpose for that property, give it back to the hands of the ownership through a COB process. Ms. Anthony Reed has submitted a COB purchase of parcel number one, six, nine, four, four, which is a vacant tract located in two fifteen Bridges, Surco. This is off Stoney Park Road, very far away from Southeast Laker. The property was acquired by the county through full lender action in two thousand and eight, and it hasn't offered for sale since that time. A deposit has been submitted in certified funds as required, proper notices have been made on publication. The county invested, included tax and cost of this property, four thousand one hundred forty-one dollars. Current assessed at nine thousand nine hundred dollars. The high bid is from Anthony Reed, the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. They understand that he is responsible for any additional fees, including advertising, recording, and revenue stamps. The board has full discretion in its decision to accept or deny the bid. I agree with County Manager's recommendation that the high bid of thirty-five hundred dollars be accepted in this case. What we're asking for is a motion to either decline the bid or to accept the bid and offer on sale.
Commissioners, you heard County Manager's recommendation, and Chris Green's comment on the property, and asking us to accept the bid for five hundred dollars.
Chief, we have a question.
Yes, sir.
I love you asking all the questions, it's not like I'm doing it to you. Anyway, you said nine thousand dollars on tax value, nine thousand something, so it doesn't make any difference what this value is not considered a.
This wouldn't be considered an armored transaction sale.
So the tax value will play the same.
Yes, sir.
I think the, I'm more proud to do is get your comments back on that.
Sure, sure, I just want to make sure it is, go up to that value.
Pressing. I make the motion that would set up the, the council, Alan, to accept the bid, to address the questions. Further discussion, questions, Commissioner Green, County Manager. Here, no, automatically, please raise your hand. Nice, Jim Allen, the next one, right from youth institution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was contacted recently by Johnny Carswell, who's the Vice Chairman of Burke County Board Commissioners. He was notified by us that Western Youth Institution in Oregon City, which has been in existence since nineteen seventy-two, that facility houses medium, minimum custody male inmates between ages thirteen and twenty-two, to keep them out of the adult correctional According to Governor Cory's twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen budget, that was released recently, proposes to close this facility in January of twenty fourteen. One thing that Mr. Carswell was informing the office that, one, obviously it's very important to Burke County, from their standpoint, because it's one of three hundred fifty jobs that they'll be losing. Talked to the sheriff's office recently, and asked them what their position was regarding this facility, and they said that they were in favor of obviously keeping the facility open, because the number of violators and offenders are growing in this age group, twenty thirteen and twenty-two. Also, vicinity of being so close to Cleveland County, it's obviously beneficial to us that we have to transport these offenders back and forth from Cleveland County to Burke County, which would be obviously more advantageous to us versus potentially having to transport them to facilities that may be in eastern part of the state, if there are facilities of this type in the state. So we do have some level of interest in this facility remaining open. And I asked all counties within this region, not only Cleveland County, but a couple of counties surrounding Burke County, to support this resolution.
I agree with the resolution, so.
But how would that be a different approach? The resolution supported a Western Youth Institution, whereas in nineteen seventy-two, the state of North Carolina constructed Western Youth Institution in Oregon City, North Carolina, to house close, medium, minimum custody male inmates between the ages of thirteen to twenty-two, so as to keep them out of adult correctional facilities. Whereas it is lawful to house male youth offenders who have been tried and adjudicated as adults or adult inmates. And whereas WII currently serves as the diagnostic facility for adjudicated male youth offenders, whereas it is not in the best long-term interest for the youthful offender or citizens of the state of North Carolina, for the youthful offender's current housing and rehabilitation program to be changed. And whereas WII staff members have faithfully and efficiently accomplished the mission of NCDPS, Division of Adult Correction, about promoting public safety through the administration of the fair and humane system, which provides reasonable opportunities for adjudicated offenders to develop aggressively responsible behavior. Whereas Governor Cory's implied twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen budget, released on March twenty two thousand, two thousand thirteen, proposes to close the facility in January of twenty fourteen. And whereas closure of this facility would have a devastating impact on youthful offenders, WII staff, the economy of the surrounding region. And therefore, it is resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, acting on behalf of all parties, to be affected by imposed closing assets, state legislative delegation. Take all steps available to them to vigorously oppose the closing, and ensure continued funding of the facility, rehabilitation programs, and maintain the current staffing that was adopted this the second day of April, two thousand and fourteen.
Next question, do we currently have, or are we using that facility?
Yes, I didn't get a number of how many, but the sheriff's office did tell me that they have transported offenders to this facility.
Commissioners, for the resolution, whereas the property is at this time, we're aware of that.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution. Any questions?
I second that.
Commissioner Allen, any other questions? Here, no, automatically, please raise your hand. I ask, Jim Allen, it's Commissioner reports, and I'll do anything not to the Commissioner. One thing with, Phil and I, we attended a guest interview last week, and we talked
to him, and gave our feelings to Commissioner, because we wanted to try to keep everything intact, always one county, one plan, organization, and I think DOT accepted real well. I think that some of the county members accepted. I think there was some hesitation in the D F T O staff, that maybe they could handle that they were brought here. So they did go ahead and approve the boundaries as well. And I think we'll meet on the fifteenth to discuss it, Tri-County Board Meeting, and we talked with Lincoln County today. And that's what I was saying for this, connect the future, you know, Lincoln County, Gaston, Cleveland, Ruff County, these counties probably got more in common than Fort Mackinac County, so that's what we're working, building, and trying to come up with something. To do so, there's a lot of work to get done. Maybe not, they've been suggesting to start having a joint meeting, so everybody's at the table, when the plan is going on, even though King Mountain, or whether Cleveland County is going to be in the MPO, that we're all at the table, we're all talking about, we all know what's going on. So that's not a bad, bad thing, you know, and one or two things that we talked about today, that probably all the projects, it don't go right now, like the seventy-four bypass, that's still a priority. Then probably if this comes about with plan or legislation, that all the projects will have to go back on the table, and look at prioritizing planning, whatever, if you don't have anything already in the base, but I think the state will take pretty much of that. But I think a rough estimate, that our portion, and I'm not sure, but if our portion would be fifteen thousand a year if they do it, Lincoln would be a little more than that. Now, I don't know how much, if they get, if they get RPO money, if that reduces what our portion would be, to take the money from the MPO and supplement our portion, what I, that's something you have to be, thought about as a bill, but we're not sure, but we do have a meeting on the fifteenth. But I know as damn right now, we're still in the RPO, active in the RPO, will stay active in the RPO, even in the event that we can't create this Tri-County thing, but Mike Old looks at, with the DOT, they like the idea. And I think some of the things is, if it comes about for me to sit again, I mean, you can accommodate the plans, or if that, that'll have to be discussed on how and then, so there's a lot to work out, but hopefully they're going to try to get something, either yes, have it up or down, but do a lot on the boundary going to fail.
Anything else? Can I have a motion to the nature?
You got it.
Second.
Second.
On the page, please raise your hand. I'll do that with you, if I have a question.
I know what it is. But we're doing a lot of work on this, but.